We do have a quorum with all members of council present. In just a minute, I will ask everyone to stand and we'll be first led by an opening prayer by Reverend Edlin Cowley, who is from United Methodist Church and Trophy Club, and then remain standing while we say pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag. And we'll be led in that by Councilmember Gorossi. Please stand.
Let us pray. To God, we thank you for the blessing of this day, this day we've never seen before, this day that was not promised to us. God, as we meet tonight, we, in this time of COVID-19, ask for your blessings with those who are experiencing the cases. God, we celebrate with those who are recovering. We connect with the families who have lost those to COVID-19. And we just ask for your spirit to continue to be with our city and our county, our state, our nation and our world. God, especially as our leaders meet tonight, we ask for your spirit to be in this meeting, to guide it, so that our community will continue to grow in the way that you would have it to grow. So be here tonight. It's in the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus the Christ, that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. I know we have a fair number of new people here tonight, and I saw some people looking around during the pledges, trying to figure out which way to face, seeing as though the council all faced toward you. We have flags in the back, our right side of the chamber, and so we are able to pledge that way without turning around and putting our backs to you. And we use that as a photograph area sometimes. So that's the reason that it might be looked a little strange of why aren't we facing the flag? It is time for public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. Presentations are limited to matters over which the council has authority. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete a speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement, or you may email them to council. Some of the people that have signed up tonight are in an adjoining room over to my left outside of this area. And so if I read their name, we'll have to give them a minute to get over here or a few moments to get here to speak. We're obviously limited by how many people we can get in this room and maintain our social distancing. So at this time, I think if you wanted to speak during citizens' presentations, and the topic that people are signing up about is dealing with a flooding issue or a drainage issue in Trophy Club, and I have four people that have signed up, and I'll read your name. At that time, come up, state your name and address to the microphone, and then you have the floor to speak a few times. All right, so Carlton Prather?
Parker.
Park- Parker, okay. Didn't look like a K. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Can I remove this or keep it on?
You may.
All right. I thank you, everybody, for giving me the honor of speaking before you about a concern that's not only for me, but my neighbors and those residents within Trophy Club. You were handed a presentation, the Parker's Flooding Experience, and I'll refer to this. If you look at the front picture, that front picture is our house on a normal day. Actually, it was taken today. And as we progress through it, and I won't go slide by slide, because I know everybody can read, and I hate those individuals that just read off a presentation. I'm not one of those. So, but when we moved into Trophy Club roughly 21 years ago, we've been a resident, never knew there was an issue with flooding. The house we moved into never had any issues. But we did get our hands on the 1981 flood map, and it indicates that our area along Indian Creek does flood. If you move to, the flooding actually is man-made. We don't live near a river or a stream or, you know, at the bottom of a hill or bottom of a mountain. We actually live in a developed area that the flooding is caused by man-made, and we never had any flooding issues prior to 2007. Lived in the house for eight years, zero problems. Once they started doing the building in Hogan's Glen, in the area west of Harmony Park, that same year, 2007, we got the flood of our lives. Just imagine outside at 620 Indian Creek, water up to here in the street, in the street. So in 2019, this past year, we all know that Indian Creek was under quite a bit of construction for street improvements, for sidewalks, for supposedly fixing the drains and the drainage issues. And that picture that you see, that's my front yard. I had a pit drug into my front yard to manage the culvert and the draining. So needless to say, that didn't work. But going back to 2007, 2007 was the first time we've had a flood, all right? And that flood, if you turn to page five, that's our mailbox. And you could see the water line where it was before it started receding. That is approximately right up to chest level for me, all right? We've had another incident in 2014, 2018, and now 2020. We keep hearing that this is an event. I'll tell you, if I hear another city person say this was an event, or a 50-year flood, or a 100-year flood, I'm going to scream, because it's happening every two to three years now, since 2007, that it's not a 50- or 200-year or whatever flood. This is a regular occurrence, all right? Wrapping up, and you can again thumb through the presentation. But what was really disastrous, if you turn to page 10, after this flood that we had, my wife, I, we saw that the water was standing in one of the drains. It wasn't draining. It wasn't draining. After a $2.5 million project, it wasn't draining. Called Tommy Uzi. He was quick on the spot, came right on out. He looked at it, popped the cover, had a city employee out. And this was in front of my house, which it was already prone to flood, which does surprise me that we had some contractors come out and identify five flooding areas within Trophy Club. Our area wasn't one of those listed. And we've had almost five and a half foot of water in the street, and that surprises me. But this was pulled out in front of my drive, this wood, on page 10. It took them four hours to get it cut out. So also what frustrates me, I was told, we did all the flood testing. We tested it. We tested it. Everything is perfect. It's wonderful. This is going to take care of your problems. And they water and flood tested this, and they pulled out a pickup truck's worth of wood, that you could throw in the back of a pickup truck, all right? Lastly, and I'll be brief, if you turn to page 11, you can see my neighbor across the street, how high the water was coming up in their yard. And you'd never think our yards would flood, all right? During the contraction, or during the construction, we almost flooded again during the construction period, which again, and we were starting to get used to it, but what's really shocking is you've had several cars flood in front of our house, all right? People get out of their cars, stepping into water waist-deep, chest-deep. And on the 2007 flood, gentlemen, I looked out onto the culverts, the drains, and there was a whirlpool the size of this desk, a whirlpool, a vortex. If this was during the day, during the evening, a child could have been walking by playing in the rain in the street. They had been sucked down, all right? A grown, I was afraid to get next to it, all right? Also, on the flood that dispersed recently, a doctor was on his way to the hospital about 5:00, 5:30 in the morning. He hit Indian Creek in his car, picked his car up, floated his car past our house. It came back because the water was running. It came back to our house. And if you look on page 14, that house and that car in front of our house, which just floated up into our yard. Again, this is a man-made issue, and if you look at the last page, there's a picture of our mailbox and my lovely wife, Mary. You look, you never think the water would get as high as it is. The water on the 2007 was high, and you can see the pictures of what caused. This past June 23rd, after all the construction that was supposed to fix the problem, it got up even higher. It was unbelievable. And that's actual height of where it was in the street. You can't even imagine the water getting that high in the street. And for it not to even be listed, I want to see where these five flood areas are in Trophy Club. I want to see if they compare to my street to get that type of water.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next person, Tanya, I won't even try to say your last name.
Krwitski.
Krwitski?
Krwitski.
Well, with a mask, I'm doing the best I can do.
Sorry.
Okay, now good.
Tanya Krwitski, hi. So my story is similar to Carlton's.
And you're at 22 Fair Green?
I'm at 22 Fair Green Drive. My husband is Lucas. He's behind me. We have two children. Want to thank you for listening to our story. So we're on Indian Creek. So we're, uh, Fair Green, sorry. We're on Fair Green Drive. So we purchased our home in 2007, and shortly after the first flooding happened at that home. So we moved in two weeks later, and the previous owner had to deal with it and dry everything out and pay, and then we moved in. So back then, we were told this is a once-in-a-lifetime event, and we should not worry about it, wouldn't happen again. Sadly, we unfortunately witnessed several similar events over the coming years, and they've drastically increased in recent years to a point where as soon as it starts raining, we as a family are immediately worried and in fear of being flooded. Due to both of us working outside of the house and traveling, it is very challenging, since we always leave with fear that the house could flood without us not being there to act, to try to avoid thousands of dollars in damage, not to mention the inconvenience of returning back to a flooded home. We have considered moving and are still doing so due to these flooding events. Okay, so there is one drain on either side of Fair Green Drive, and directly, there's one in front of our house. When it rains, water gushes down from both sides of Fair Green, but especially down from the west side. The volume and force of the water coming down both sides of the street is actually shocking and washes away anything to the lowest part of Fair Green, which is right in front of our house. On a particularly heavier rain, water additionally gushes also down from Indian Creek, from Indian Creek around and through other homes, through Carlton's home, to Mr. Sherwood's homes and through our home. So it comes down from three directions through our house, like it did on June 23rd. The one storm drain near our house was rendered completely ineffective. This is dangerous. Cars are displaced, and driving, walking can be fatal. I'm going to say that. It's really dangerous. We don't get five feet of water like Carlton does, but the force, it's like a river running down this way, this way, and water coming from all ways, and it just goes right through, so. An issue? Why is this an issue? Well, this is due to the fact that in recent years, our neighborhood has grown tremendously, and the areas where water could be absorbed by the ground no longer exists. Developments of new homes and masses of concrete prevent that. Unfortunately, no new drains were added near our house, as hundreds of other houses were added around us. And all the storm water runs to the lowest point of this neighborhood, which is directly to the drain in front of our house. These flooding events, these flooding events in and around our house are happening more frequently, with three or four events having taken place in 2018. What that means is we didn't flood in 2018, but the water gets up to the threshold, and it's about a foot of water. It takes about 14 inches to come through the house, but about, you know, it'll flood up to 12 or so. And then we are out in the middle of the night in our boots, trying to get buckets of water so the house doesn't flood. I mean, this should not happen in Trophy Club. It really shouldn't. So you can see, you never know when you go to sleep what's going to happen, and it's just not nice. The new Indian Creek construction unfortunately did not add any improvement, since the size of the drainage pipe draining to the Gulf Course Pond to 22 Fair Green Drive is still the same. We had to invest and build new friendstrains around our house, invest in a manual electrical water pump that pumps the water out of the driveway so our house hopefully stays dry. None of this lately makes a difference with the sheer volume of water running towards our drain. On June 23rd, 14 inches of rain came through our house. We woke up to our entire house several inches underwater at 5:15 a.m. Our oldest child woke us up and said, "Mom, Dad, please come down. There's water everywhere." And the little one was very, very scared. Walls, floors and furniture were damaged along with the outside landscaping. Restoration services came that morning, and it was a $7,000 cash bill to have 52 dryers and three dehumidifiers in our house for two weeks. The children were displaced to other homes for the first few nights and emotionally attached, sorry, emotionally taxed. We had 52 noisy fans and three dehumidifiers going constantly for weeks. Ninety percent of our home was not livable. We have initiated a claim with the city's insurance, and we expect a speedy reimbursement. There will be no doubt, there will be future damages as well unless action is taken by our city to fix these issues immediately. How many times can we file a claim? Our house value is decreasing and our anxiety is increasing. If we move, who will buy our house? The city may have to. Additional storm drains in front of our house at the top west end of Fair Green may help alleviate the water flow. In addition, regular maintenance of the drains and creeks are a must. The sandbags currently in front of our house are not very attractive, as you can imagine, and definitely not the answer to this issue. We do not wish to live in constant fear of the rain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next person is Rennell De Guzman. Did I say that correctly? So when you come up, remove your mask, state your name and address, and then you can address us.
Good evening. My name is Rennell and De Guzman. I live with my wife at 618 Indian Creek Trophy Club Drive. And we are in the west side of Carlton Parker, who was kind of described the events of June 23. Were flooding, early rainstorm that about, took about 30 to 45 minutes, you know, flooded the area between East Hillside Street and West Side Street, that is the extent of where the floodwaters are. And this is the second occurrence, you know. We've been in, we've been in the house for the last 22 years, we're probably are the longest among the five families that are here now. We moved in November 1998, and the first occurrence happened in 2007, June 2007. And that's been almost like nine years. We never had any, any type of flooding and even, you know, accumulation of any puddles of water along, along that segment of Indian Creek. And it was kind of devastating the first time, and since we were kind of new to the place, we didn't know, we have no recourse of what to do, but just kind of repair all the damages that was incurred. And then there were a few other instances which was described, you know, that happened in the last four years, which I can recall. There were three events, flooding events, but it never, it never made into our house up until June 23, which was a very recent flooding. We got some damages as well, but almost about the same that we had. So I won't, I would be brief. I don't have any pictures, you know, just like Carlton, but since we're kind of beside him and our back neighbor, who has a swimming pool that got kind of damaged as well, and also inside the house, that will, you know, somehow give you an idea of, you know, the extent of the flooding that we have in our house as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next person is Dick Sherwood. Dick, if you want to come forward, please. State your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dick Sherwood. I live at 17 Fair Green Drive. And I would like to refer to this particular set of charts that you have. Has my name on that. On page two of that slide deck are the list of topics that I'd like to cover, and I'll cover them quickly and briefly and respectful of our time. If you'll turn to page three, and you can look at page three and page four. This is a copy of the 1981 Trophy Club Flood Plan. And if you take a careful note, look at this flood plan, you will see that the arrows showing where the excess storm drain water is supposed to go, goes to my house. I live right behind Carlton Parker, and Tanya lives right in front of me, and all of the drainage comes to my yard. Now, this was the plan in 1981, and this covered 48.3 acres of property in Trophy Club that was draining into my house. If you turn to page four, there's another view of my house, and the yellow arrows on page four actually show you the flow of the water. It not only comes from my back neighbor, but it comes from both sides, and it actually comes in the form of a river. There are eight storm drains that feed the culvert pipe where all this floodwater is supposed to go. These eight storm drains feed into one single 42-inch culvert. It can't possibly hold this amount of water when we get the heavy rains. On page six, I want to show you a couple pictures of the 2014 flood that I experienced. This is my back door. So I've got water coming in my back door, and I've got water flowing through my backyard. If you look at page seven, this is a picture of my backyard. Not only is the water over the pavement and going into the back door, it is flowing across my backyard. And then on page eight, the last picture for 2014 flood is my backyard, where the depth is 23 inches. It's knee-deep. The other pictures there are just of interest to show you the kind of damage that occurs every time it floods. Now, this 2014 flood was actually our first major experience in the flooding. If you'll go to page 12, what I did, once I found out I had a flooding problem, is I built a retaining wall across the back of the yard, and then we had the 2014 flood, and I got a little frustrated because the water, the retaining wall didn't do me any good. And that was a retaining wall protecting me from Carlton's house. So then I built an enhanced drain on the east side, and on the west side of my house, I built a retaining wall the full length of my house. So I thought, well, maybe this will take care of it. Then in 2015, it flooded again. It didn't take care of it. And in 2018, I had water in the house again, and so I said, "Okay, I'm going to give it one more go." So I took my backyard and I cemented my entire backyard with a cement swell. I had asked the engineers back in 2014, could they come to my yard and build some kind of retaining wall or swell? And they said, "No, we can't do that. It's private property. You have to do it yourself." Well, I built the swell, and I thought maybe that would finally fix the problem. In May, we had another flood, and, not a flood, but a regular rainstorm, page 14. This is a typical rainstorm that is less than three inches per hour. And what happens if I'm less than three inches per hour? Have I got a river on the right side of my house, and I got a river on the left side of my house? And that's a typical picture that you see there on page 12. Well, what happened on June 23rd of this year was we had four inches of rain in 45 minutes. Most of you probably recall that and experienced that. Well, my swell didn't do any good. I had seven inches of rain at my back door. It flooded the entire downstairs of my house. Now, I'd already been through three other floods. I've been through the get-the-water guys in there and dry it out, and this one was extremely heavy. The retaining wall got pushed over by the force of the water coming from Carlton's yard. And then these other pictures here just give you snapshots. And some of you are probably familiar with what happens when your house floods. Well, this just gives you an idea of what it looks like inside after the cleaning team comes in, the remediation team comes in. And so if you'll turn to page 20 and 21, I'll wrap this up. Mr. Mayor, we need some help over here on, on these, these families that live in this line are getting flooded every time it rains more than three inches per hour. And this is happening at least or about every two years. Two years ago, in September, we had flooding rain, and I'm, I'm starting to get suspicious about what's going to happen this September. Well, there are options to fix this, and I appreciate the town manager helping us think through some of the options and talk about some of the options. I think what he's going to do is he's going to bring you some things to vote on in the near future. And I would ask you to vote in favor of solving this problem. I mean, this is really starting to get frustrating besides expensive. So on the last page, on page 21, I think most of us are looking for a little bit of help in the compensation for the expenses which have happened in this recent flood. And if we don't do anything, I would hope that you would help us with future plans for compensation for what this is costing us, because this is not going to go away if we don't fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. And the last person at this point is Vivian Moghan.
It's my hand artist, Gillian, Gillian Mon.
Oh, Gillian, that's a J, okay.
Yeah. It's a, the last name is a Welsh spelling of a German name. Anyway, thank you for hearing, hearing me out. My name is Gillian Mon, and I live at 15 Fair Green with my husband, and we have five little girls, seven and under, so. Lot of little kids. And if you have this handout, this is the one I'll be referring to. So we bought our house in 2013 and kind of had no idea that it would have been in the flood plane. It was never something that looked like it would ever flood. And then I remember peeking over the fence and to 17 Fair Green, our Dick's house, and seeing a dry creek bed, and I was pretty shocked at that, and we kind of laughed and goes, "Oh, he has a dry creek bed back there. There must be something going on." So very quickly, we found out that our yard frequently flooded, and in essence, it would serve as kind of like a reservoir. The water would back up about up to 35 feet, and it'd be up to two to three feet in depth, kind of creating like a little lake or reservoir when the water kind of backed up. And in the picture, you see my niece there, and they would go out and, and play in the water a lot of the times, because it would be our, like, our little lake. Anyway, so in 2019, we decided to build a pool and kind of correct all the drainage issues. And so on page four, we have a picture of kind of the construction. And immediately, we found out that the water, they had to build the pool up. So in essence, there's not going to be kind of that reservoir water that's going to collect there anymore. So very quickly, like, when they first dug the hole, we had a rainstorm, and within two hours, our 30,000-gallon hole in the, in the, in the dirt had filled with water. So it, so it collapsed, and they had to start over for its square one. After that, it filled with water many other times, but the gun night prevented it from collapsing, which was fine. After that, anyway, this isn't a cheap pool. We spent about 120 grand. We spent about a hundred and twenty grand on the pool itself. We upgraded it to about another four, we spent another forty grand on just a suitable drainage system to process the runoff that we were expecting. Now, the pool is finished, but it fills, it finished around November twenty nineteen. But it frequently, like bi-weekly, fills with runoff and debris. And our pool company is debating even dropping us because there's so much floodwater that kind of backs up and spills into our pool. And they're spending tons and tons of money on cleaning our filters and adding more chemicals into it. And we've spent, like, we've replaced our eight filters at least once, and have spent at least eleven hundred dollars on them just for all the mud that's getting in our pool. The pool company says they can't fix it because the water is backing up from the street, and it's not really their problem because all the drainage is shooting down that way. But they can't prevent it from backing back up. On page five, we have pictures of our backyard effort flooded, and the most recent flood last month. And then the pictures underneath are like typical for the amount of debris that gets in our pool from a heavy rainfall, not necessarily flood. On page six, we have the map of our drainage system from our pool. And then on page seven, we have kind of the damage from our last previous, our last flood in June, which reached up past our baseboards into our kitchen cabinets, rotting them out. We had the flood companies come out, obviously, like our other neighbors, spent thousands and thousands to get everything dried out. And we skipped town while that was all happening. One of our scariest events was in September twenty eighteen. Me and my husband were out on a date, and we realized that it was raining and raining. We decided to come back. We tried to get through Fair Green on the east side, but the street was shut off, rightly so because of all the floodwater. We managed to get around through Hogan's Glen and get to our house through all the floodwater. And at that point, we found a river running between our house and seventeen Fair Green and up into our garage. Because usually, the water level goes, it has, this is the first time it's flooded since we've been like where it's gotten in our actual house. But it usually gets up into our garage, gets up to our back door, and kind of is about an inch up to our back door. So me and my husband made it into our house, and we're so lucky because our babysitters at the time had no idea it was flooding. And we're so glad that they weren't trying to leave at the wrong time because they were just in a sedan, and they were new drivers. So they sat at our house and waited for their dad to come like at midnight whenever all the water had receded. And so we're glad we got there in time. We're also scared about, obviously, the whirlpools in the river that develops with our kids, even though we try to keep them inside. And luckily, the flooding usually happens at night, so they are inside. But we do have a lot of visitors that come over, and they like to wander sometimes. So that's also a concern of ours. On page ten, I have all the upgrades we did after we built the pool. We put a retaining wall in. We added extra drains. If you could see, I put pictures of all the extra drains we added in, and the retaining wall to kind of redirect the flow of water. And ultimately, our concern is that with the new pool build, it's going to make flooding even worse for us and our neighbors because we no longer act as a reservoir, the reservoir that we were acting as in the past, where we would turn into a, we would turn into a lake. And I feel like it's happening more frequently. We're kind of redirecting the water and it's kind of skirting it to our neighbors in a way which is scary, scary for us and what might happen. And on page eleven, I don't, this is just something I noticed yesterday, which was Harmony Park. On the east side of Harmony Park, there's, looks like they're making an embankment to kind of protect those houses from water running off from the Hogan's Glen type area. So I'm like, I'm kind of thinking that they're having the same problem with all the water coming from those areas. And it looks like it's directing it straight back down to our houses again. So I kind of took pictures of that. I don't know. I mean, I followed it down, and it went to Culvert. But I'm like, I can only imagine that Culvert's going straight back to where we're at because it's right across the street. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Letty, did you have anybody else give you a sign up for this?
No, sir, not for this.
So the other two I have are dealing with this plan development in the future, is that right? Okay. So citizens, thank you for coming. I don't know if some of you came just in support of the drainage issue or not. As I said in the introduction to public comments, we're not allowed to debate an issue that's not on the agenda. You heard some references about the town manager's involvement. And as council, we are aware of the fact that the town manager has contacted our town engineers and is working on trying to figure out a plan and is talking to the citizens. So we're trying to be responsive, and hopefully, that will move forward before we have another big rain. All right, let's move on then. We will go to our item number one under announcements, reports, and proclamations. The first item is a COVID nineteen update, and President Chris York of Baylor Scott &amp; White Greatvine is going to address this. Mr. York.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you all for the opportunity to be here.
Don't you have a PowerPoint?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to speak if that's okay.
That's fine, okay.
All right. We're grateful for the relationship that we have with the town of Trophy Club. And I also want, I know there's going to be a proclamation here in just a moment, but I want to take an opportunity to thank the first responders, the police, fire EMS. We have a fantastic relationship with them. We work with them on a daily basis to care for the community. And as challenging as COVID nineteen has been for us as a society, being a first responder in this, it's been amplified. And so we're grateful for the work that these men and women do each and every day. With that said, this has been a challenging six months. I know you probably know it as intimately as anyone, Mayor. Back in March, I've shared with the mayor earlier, I've been in healthcare for twenty-eight years. The first couple weeks of March were hands down the most challenging two weeks of my twenty-eight years working in the healthcare field. Everything pretty much changed on a dime, and we were getting updates almost daily from the CDC or the WHO, World Health Organization, on what were the new standards in terms of caring for patients with the virus? How do we protect ourselves from the virus? And so there was a tremendous amount of anxiety among care providers, as you might imagine, not to mention the folks that were sick ill enough to be hospitalized. We're also incredibly grateful. There has been just an outpouring of love and support from all the communities that we serve, whether it's through prayer services surrounding our hospital and praying over our entire campus, our care providers and our patients, people providing meals and snacks and just signs and cards of encouragement. We've literally wallpapered our entire campus with some of the, many of those signs that people have just shared as an expression of the gratitude for the men and women that are at the bedside and are at the tip of the spear in terms of fighting this virus on a daily basis. So that's been incredibly challenging. After the first couple weeks of March, really probably toward the beginning of April, we started to get into a little bit more of a routine as to what this is going to look like. And I think from a society standpoint, we did a pretty good job of following a lot of the initiatives to shelter in place, wear the masks and other personal protective equipment as it might be available. For most of April and May and really into June, our daily census at the hospital just related to COVID patients was around, on average, four to seven patients a day. Back in March, it had gotten up to fifteen, and we felt like we had leveled off. And we had several weeks where it was a pretty flat line. There was no increase. And then July came. Our census just for COVID patients at our hospital ramped up over the course of a week, went from four to seven to twenty-eight to thirty-two on a daily basis. And again, that might not sound like a lot when you're talking about a three hundred bed hospital, but the intensity of that care and the resources required for that care is just exponentially amplified. And so our team has done a fantastic job. Now, that being said, we haven't been hit nearly as hard as some of our sister facilities in the metroplex. There's a variety of reasons that we're speculating on that, why that might be. But nonetheless, our area right here in the northern mid-cities of DFW hasn't been hit nearly as hard as some of the other hospitals. And when I say hasn't been hit nearly as hard, I'm strictly talking about the need to hospitalized patients because they're so sick with the virus. So obviously, July has been a pretty taxing month. We've thankfully leveled off. We've actually had a few days where it's dropped just a little bit. The other thing that's been very encouraging is, as difficult and challenging as this has been, is that we have had a tremendous success. When this first started, if someone, a patient were to go on a ventilator, that was pretty much a death sentence. We've had a tremendous amount of success of getting patients off of ventilators and getting to get to see them go home. We had one patient, one hundred years young, who was discharged just a couple of weeks ago. We had another patient who had the longest that we're aware of. From the time he came into our hospital, he had a couple stops at other facilities, came back to our hospital for rehab. But he had a one hundred and fourteen day journey in his journey to recovery. So we're tremendously grateful for the success that we have had, the convalescent plasma exchanges, the variety of cocktail of medications that we've been using. And obviously, we continue to learn on a daily basis what we can do to better treat the virus, how we can monitor patients who have recovered and what some of their follow-up symptoms may look like. And there's a tremendous amount that we're still learning. My wife is a clinician. She's going to participate. She has not tested positive, but she's going to participate in a federal study that's looking at healthcare workers who have been in close contact with patients to see if they have any specific antibodies that may be beneficial to the rest of us. So there's a lot going on. We're excited about the potential for a vaccine. The New England Journal of Medicine just printed a very encouraging trial study for the first vaccine. But there were only forty-seven people involved. They're getting ready to go to a study of thirty thousand people. So we look forward to that hopefully replicating itself from a larger study when you're talking about the metadata. So we're excited about that. But this is still one of those things, it's in all likelihood, this is going to be with us for a little while. I got my hair cut last week, and the lady who was cutting my hair said, how long's it going to be before we can stop wearing masks? I said, in my opinion, it may be springtime before we're at a point where we can safely take the masks off. And that's after we get the vaccine out in the public, we start administering it to people that are probably more at risk, the elderly population, folks with comorbidities. And then ultimately, hopefully, as a nation, certainly as a community, build up some level of herd immunity. But this is probably going to be one of those things that comes back like influenza. And there's going to be more vaccinations. Hopefully, there'll be some medications like Tamiflu. If you get the flu, you can take Tamiflu, and it shortens or mitigates your symptoms. So there's going to be a lot that we continue to learn about this. The exciting thing, I think, for the communities that we serve, prior to coronavirus ever coming to our market, we were recognized by four different rating agencies, national rating agencies, as one of the best hospitals in the United States. CMS, Center for Medicare Medicaid, rated us at a five-star hospital. There's only four hundred and seven hospitals in the United States that achieve that level. And this is based on outcomes, not we paid a fee and we want you to tell you how good we are. These are deals where you get your grade whether you like it or not. The Erie Chapman Foundation out of Nashville, Tennessee, recognized us as a gold level healing hospital. The Leapfrog Institute recognized us as a grade A. And then IBM Watson Health, they recognize us with their highest level rating as well as one of the top one hundred hospitals in the United States. So with all that being said, we're grateful. We've always been historically a great hospital. The work that our team has done over the last couple of years has really been focused around three key principles. We're founded as a Christian ministry of healing. Everything that we do starts and stops with love one another. If we ever drop the ball, because as good as we are, we're not perfect, and we want to welcome, receive feedback as a precious gift and welcome at every opportunity that we have. And then we want to lead change to make sure that we get better. So that's really our focus. And with that, through coronavirus, we've gotten even safer. Our healthcare system has rolled out a number of initiatives to keep folks safe. And one of the things I want to share is, as great a job as EMS does here under the leadership of Chief Taylor and Captain Beck, there's still folks in the community, not just Trophy Club, but in surrounding areas, that are afraid to call nine-one-one. So folks, instead of coming to the hospital with a lot of pain due to appendicitis, they wind up in the ER and the OR ultimately with a ruptured appendix in their septic. Folks that may have a headache, they wind up in the ICU with a stroke. Or folks that may have a little bit of chest pain, or maybe it's radiating down an arm, they wind up with a heart attack. And unfortunately, there's been a lot of folks who have stayed home trying to manage symptoms during this pandemic because they're afraid to get a virus. And I just want to reassure everyone, literally, our hospital is one of the safest places you can go to in this pandemic time. My wife was at a grocery store not too long ago, and again, being a clinician, this just shook her to her core. But the fellow that was bagging the groceries couldn't get a bag separated. And this was during the mask up time, and he had gloves on. His mask was down below his chin, and he couldn't get a bag separated. So he literally licked his glove to separate the bag. And our team, that's just a prime example of lay folks in the public that aren't educated in sterile technique and how to deal with infectious diseases. We put ourselves at risk. The men and women that deliver care on a daily basis on our campus, they're absolutely top-notch. And this is what they've been called to do, is care for sick people. And they know how to handle it, how to keep themselves safe, how to keep the patients safe. And that's been one of the, another success story through all of this. We've had a very low transmission rate to our team. The team members that, the vast majority of our team members that have contracted the virus haven't been in contact with COVID-positive patients. So they've likely, it's been community-acquired. And again, that goes back to the additional safe care plan that our healthcare system rolled out. Again, to keep folks safe when they're in our care, keep our team safe. We're on a little bit of a lockdown from a visitation standpoint because obviously, we want to mitigate human interaction because the way this virus replicates is to give it fresh hosts. And the more interaction we have from a human standpoint, and that's also a challenge as well. Quite honestly, I was talking to a primary care physician the other day. About fifty percent of his practice right now is treating depression because people have isolated themselves to the point where they're struggling emotionally. And so there's a variety of challenges that we face. But the number one thing from my perspective is to keep our care team safe so that we can continue to care for patients as they come to our hospital. So far, we've been very fortunate in that. We want to stay focused on that. While at the same time, pouring out as much love and compassion on our patients and their family members as we possibly can. We try to use a lot of technology while we don't have as much visitation as we used to to try to keep family members connected with their loved ones. Because it's bad, no one comes to the hospital for a fun reason unless you're having a baby. And then if you're having a baby, mom and dad are going to have a different definition of what's fun. That being said, we want to try to connect families as much as we can. And we're trying to use technology to make that happen. But still, it's a time, and it's probably going to be a time for quite a while where we need to isolate as much as we can so we can isolate this virus and ultimately kill it off. And then obviously, with the potential for vaccines coming, additional remedies and therapies, hopefully, we'll get over the curve here in the next several months. But it's probably going to be a little bit of a challenge for us for several months to come. So that's the update I wanted to share. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Council, any questions?
No, I can tell you, I echo what you say. I had to use your ER two Fridays ago for something.
Yeah.
Non-COVID-related, and I can say that it was, I had the same fear. You know, do I want to go to ER that I potentially could get something? But it was a great experience. I mean, you know, everything was first class, and I got to ask a lot of questions about COVID. But I passed all those and went right back, and everything was, it was great. My doctor, I can't, it's all a blur. I remember his name was Skipper.
Yeah, Skipper Bertrand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good doctor.
Fantastic. I'll pass that on to him. I appreciate that. Sorry you had to come to the E D.
No, everything's good.
But we have, again, taking additional measures. When we first were dealing with coronavirus, we were trying to figure out what's the best way to isolate patients when they come in. The back half of our ED used to be an ICU, and so we built a temporary wall. Anyone who doesn't pass the questions that you had to ask or answer, they'll go to the isolation area. So again, we're cohorting patients as rapidly as we possibly can and trying to isolate so there isn't transmission to other folks. So if you have to come for a non-COVID-related event, it's going to be a safe event for you.
I want to say congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
Recognition, your leadership for the hospital. Appreciate you coming and talking to the Rotary Club. Seems like it was about a million years ago. But, and I also appreciate you talking about depression because mental health and people isolating, that's a huge thing. And they may not realize the depths that they can go to. So thank you for mentioning that as well. I also wanted to say, I heard today on the news that here in Texas, the COVID rate is seventeen point eight per thousand. I also wanted to say, I heard today on the news that here in Texas, the COVID rate is seventeen point eight per thousand. I think they said, "We're running about sixty cases for thirteen thousand people." So Trophy Club's doing well. I want to say thank you residents for maintaining your distance, keeping clean. You're not bringing the virus back here.
Yeah.
And we want to keep it that way. But some people see the daily report, they think, "Oh my God, we just had another two cases." We're still extremely low and let's keep it that way.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yarke, appreciate you coming this evening. Sorry that you had to wait a while to make that presentation, but we really appreciate what Baylor Scott and White does for our area and especially your involvement in our community and the health of everyone here. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, take care.
The second item under item one is issuance of a proclamation recognizing August 2020 as Police Association Month. At this time, I would recognize Councilmember Carl Monger to read the proclamation and move its acceptance.
And I'm Husky and it's because of seasonal allergies, just wanted to make that. Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number twenty twenty dash zero five. A proclamation of the Trophy Club, Texas Town Council, recognizing the month of August 2020 as Police Appreciation Month in Trophy Club, Texas. Whereas in eighteen twenty-nine, Sir Robert Peel, the father of modern police service, was credited with saying, "In effect, the police are the public and the public are the police." And whereas this is the earliest documented statement about community policing and how police legitimacy is achieved, and whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Law Enforcement Agency of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, and whereas the Trophy Club Police Department serves more than thirteen thousand residents and was recognized by the Texas Crime Prevention Association for its efforts in crime prevention and community involvement. Since its formation in nineteen ninety, the Trophy Club Police Department has provided traditional law enforcement services and has also provided innovative approaches to the community through partnerships with various organizations and problem-solving activities, and whereas this August, the Trophy Club Police Department celebrates thirty years of service. And whereas the Trophy Club Town Council encourages the community to express gratitude to our law enforcement officers by wearing and displaying blue, saying thank you, sharing your story, and getting involved with your safe officer to begin planning for this year's National Night Out. And whereas, police officers choose this noble profession because of their belief of an orderly society. Officers put on their uniform each day, answer the call as their duty, and serve our community daily, not knowing what they will encounter during their shift. Has many situations recently have a catastrophic outcome? Daily, our officers face a myriad of calls such as mental illness, homelessness, gun violence, child abuse, racial disparity, and immigration issues, to name a few. While in some cases, officers may be facing these very issues within their families. Officers have always been held to a higher standard and must be considered for the human being wearing the uniform. Officers are also parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, uncles, aunts, just as you and I. Let us thank them for choosing policing as they are our lifeline to safety and security. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nick, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, to hereby proclaim August 2020 as Police Officer Appreciation Month in the Town of Trophy Club, Texas. And I move that we pass this proclamation.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Garassi. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Arata to come forward and for him to introduce people that he has in the audience that are in the police force and have them come up, and then we will recognize them.
Mayor and counsel, thank you very much. Town manager, forward, thank you for your support. Tonight with us, we have Captain Woodard, Captain Bobby Tillman, Sergeant Gleck, Chad Officer, Chad Crum, and Levi Cobbler. And Mr. Spooner, our intelligence analyst, is all here tonight. Gentlemen, thank you.
Chief and officers, I hope you know that the citizens of Trophy Club pay tribute to you. This is just one way that we can do it, through a simple proclamation. The proclamation encourages our citizens to get more direct in showing their appreciation. Whether that's sending you an email, a Facebook post, coming by to visit, ordering some food that can be delivered. Or they can deliver it, they just can't get to you to do that, to say socially distancing. When I moved to Trophy Club about twenty-seven years ago, that citizen policing was fairly new. And to recognize the fact that the police are our friends, they're our neighbors, they work with us to try to keep us to be a safe community. And we continue to get recognition from various organizations that take that history about arrests and, and situations that happened to us in a criminal sense, to be one of the lowest places in Texas for occurrence per a hundred population. And that's because we have great people who are willing to give up themselves to make it better and to keep us safe. So thank you very much for what you do. And we're going to get a picture of everybody together if we can get that. So if you'll turn around and gather there.
Just hold your breath, my big issue.
You're going to have to make room. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, I won't shake your hands, but I know you know that we really appreciate what you do. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Because they were here for an hour. All right, the last item in this agenda section is an update from the town manager about our Republic Services Waste Contract. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We had originally thought we would be able to have this item on the agenda for this evening, but there's still a few little items that haven't been addressed in final form. I have absolutely no doubt that it'll be on your August eleventh agenda, which will be your next council meeting. And it's pretty much the current level of service we have today is going to be what we're recommending. There's a few little tweaks and a few little changes in there, but overall, I think we'll be ready to go on August eleventh.
Thank you. Steve, anybody have any, council have any questions for Steve? All right, seeing no one wishing to speak, we will move on then to item number two. It's a public hearing for case PD twenty dash zero zero one, The Trails. And it is seven fifty-nine PM. We're going to conduct a public hearing regarding a request to rezone approximately eight point eight-eight acres from R-15 Single Family Residential District to a PD Plan Development District to construct forty-two detached single-family residential lots located at twenty-three oh four and twenty-three forty-four Trophy Club, Trophy Park Drive. And David Jones, are you going to say something first?
Let me just introduce, because this is the first time David Jones
Okay.
has been before you. He's been before council, before P&amp;Z on a Zoom meeting. But David Jones is a planner with the firm Fries and Nichols. He's kind of, I guess, acting town planner at this point. As you know, Lisa Payne, our planner, is currently on maternity leave. So David is helping us out. And when you note the first rattle out of the box is a rezoning and with residential lots. And that doesn't happen too often here the last few years in, in Trophy Club. But he's done a great job and I'll turn that over to David, let him bring you the case.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Mayor, council. This is the property in question, it's a little under nine acres at Trophy Park Drive, roughly opposite of Ballmerell Drive and the, the Dog Park. So there's the Army Corps land there to the south. Churchill Downs to the east, Abbey Moore to the west. I won't go through everything on this chart, but the yellow highlighted column is the proposed development. So the minimum lot size would be six thousand square feet. And then you can see the, the developments that surround it and then the current zoning. And I'll highlight the current zoning, which is R-15. Fifteen, of course, stands for a minimum fifteen thousand square foot lot size. So they're asking for a little under half of that. Minimum lot width would be fifty feet under the proposed PD. And the current R-15 is ninety feet. The plan presented to P&amp;Z requested eighteen hundred square foot minimum lot, minimum house size. The applicant has bumped that up to twenty-two hundred square feet with the request that's before you tonight. So again, you can compare that to the surrounding developments. The current zoning would require twenty-five hundred square foot minimum house size. One other thing I would point out on this table is, is the density. It's a little under five dwelling units per acre. You can see how that compares to the, to the surrounding developments on the chart. This is a proposed layout of the subdivision, forty-two detached, uh, single-family residential lots, all served off of a loop drive that would connect to Trophy Park Drive at two points. There is a existing cell tower in the southeast corner of the property that has an existing driveway that comes off of Trophy Park Drive. It runs immediately to the west of Churchill Downs. So the green lot that you see, it's labeled as Lot Nineteen X, that would be a access point for the, the cell tower that wouldn't be a buildable lot. And then there are three other X lots along Trophy Park Drive. Those would be for the landscaping and retaining wall along Trophy Park Drive. Other than that, the forty-two detached residential lots make up the balance of the proposed development. This is Exhibit D in your packet, this is a fencing plan. And the applicant does have a, a presentation following mine, so I won't go into too much detail. But it is color-coded to show the different fencing that the applicant is proposing. The red along Trophy Park Drive is a six-foot masonry wall. To the east, which is the Churchill Downs side, between the proposed lots and the current driveway for the cell tower, is a six-foot wood fence. There would be a section of masonry wall that would surround the equipment yard for the cell tower. Facing the Army Corps land to the south, you can see on the, the green line, would be a six-foot tubular steel fence which would match the adjacent developments. And finally, to the west, which is the Abbey Moore side, the applicant is proposing an eight-foot orange fence. That is a change from the P&amp;Z proposal, and I'll go over the, the other changes. One I already mentioned is the minimum house size. Sixty percent of those would actually be required to be twenty-four hundred square feet under the applicant's current proposal. Also increase the minimum pitch of the roof to ten over twelve. The previous request was for eight over twelve. Bumped up the minimum masonry percentage from eighty percent to ninety percent. Mentioned Abbey Moore, those residents to the, to the west. You have received a, a couple of emails or letters in support from residents of that neighborhood. The applicant has met with them multiple times and has agreed to construct that eight-foot wood fence along that side, also to bury the power line that exists along that side, which the applicant will discuss more in a minute. And also make the homes along that west side all one-story at the request of, of those neighbors. That concludes all of my comments. As I say, the applicant has a, a presentation following mine, but I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I have a question about the fencing. Can you go back to that slide that had the color? So you're saying one of the side fences is eight-foot?
The, the west side fence.
All right, and that's towards Abbey Moore?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so the, the fence on the other side is six-foot?
Yes, sir, the fence facing Churchill Downs.
Okay, and so...
And then those, those residents currently have fences as well on the other side of the driveway, which they would keep.
So there would be two fences?
There'd be a fence on either side of that cell tower drive, yes, sir.
Okay, and... So the non-buildable lots that you're referring to is a sliver lot by the cell tower?
It, it's that triangular-shaped lot labeled Nineteen X, that would be access to the cell tower. And then you, you see that green line coming from Churchill Downs, that's a sewer extension that would come from Churchill Downs that served this development is, is the other green line that you see in there.
And the other open space is up behind the fence along Trophy Park Drive, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And there's no other open space necessarily in this development?
Correct, there's no other open space.
All right, council, anybody else have questions of our planner before we have a presentation?
Yeah, just to go on what Nick is saying, the, the wall that separates the new development from Churchill Downs, who ultimately would be responsible for that wall?
The marked in the yellow?
Well, they look both in yellow, but the, the one to the east.
The one to the east would be the responsibility of the homeowners.
But, but, okay, so it's a masonry wall that's between the new development and Churchill Downs? And you're saying that it will be the new residents?
I'm sorry, the, the masonry wall is, is only around the, the cell tower equipment. That would be maintained by the HOA. And then the, the fence that actually goes behind the residential lots would be maintained by the homeowners. So those would be wood fences.
But it's, but I thought there's an existing masonry fence now?
On the Churchill Downs side.
So you, so you're, I think that goes to what Nick's saying, you're going to put, our ordinances don't allow fence on a fence.
Right, there's, there's adequate separation between the existing Churchill Downs fence and the fence that, that Scorebird is proposing.
So then who's responsible for the middle part? The, the open part?
The, the driveway isn't, isn't part of, of this rezoning, it, it's not part of the applicant's land purchase. So that would continue to be owned by, by the current property owner who'd be responsible for maintaining it or however their agreement with the, the tower company is.
And how do we ensure that? How do we ensure that that property owner who's selling this land will then be responsible for that? How do we, just through normal code enforcement?
Correct.
Okay, and how much space, that's just a driveway-type space?
It's about twenty-five feet wide.
So it goes from, from Trophy Park all the way to the cell tower?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and so the, the, the lot that's open from the new street going to the cell tower, that's just a drainage use and there's no access to the tower that way?
It, it will have an access easement, so, so the tower company, the fire department, whoever needs to access that would, would be able to access the cell tower from that lot.
Okay, so they can go either, either direction to the cell tower?
Correct.
And is that, um, I can act, I can ask the applicant questions about the open space?
Okay.
That's, that's good for them, thanks.
So I have a question around what's before us tonight. And maybe I'll just wait till we get to the consideration item as opposed to at this point. So I'll just wait. Counsel, anybody else have any questions at this point? All right, and then we do have a representative, Adam Boosick. Adam, if you want to come forward, you're welcome to remove your mask. And you have a presentation to give us and we can then go into the rest of our public hearing. And we have some speakers also.
Do I need to, look, do I need to turn this?
No, you don't have to do that.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, council, members of staff and residents who are here to listen to our presentation tonight. My name is Adam Buchek with the Scorebird Company. And our sister building company is Windsor Homes. We are a Dallas-Fort Worth-based privately-held development and homebuilding company. We don't have any interests outside of Dallas-Fort Worth. And we've built homes in South Lake, Carroll, Colleyville, Keller, building currently in North Wychen Hills and hoping to have the privilege of having an opportunity to do so for this project here called The Trails, which is a, hopefully you'll agree with us, with me, that... for this project here called The Trails, which is a, hopefully you'll agree with us, with me, that our, this is a beautiful opportunity for a quality, high-quality patio home development, which we know is in very high demand for this area. And we have no doubt it would be, it would be a beautiful addition to the town. With that, I have a very short presentation. I've condensed it significantly with staff's direction and be respectful of everybody's time. Real brief, we have a few slides on location and history. We'll talk about zoning requests, some considerations I'd like to point out to y'all. And then we have a couple of slides of some high-quality representative product and that'll be it. We know the property location is at the northwest quadrant of Trophy Club. It's kind of catty-corner from Freedom Dog Park and it's about 8.9 acres. Friends Trophy Park Drive. This aerial here was taken in 1958 and the property, subject property is located where the red star is. And I'm not saying anything you don't already know, but I just wanted to simply show a few illustration slides of the history of my property owners, the Coleman family and the Welsh family. I have two property owners that own, that own this part of this property. The Coleman's have owned this property, their property, since the 60s. And the Welsh's bought their property in 2007. Here's 2001, fast forwarding 40 years. And the Coleman family was there when Trophy Club started really exploding. And you can see that they still, even in 2001, nobody was there except for them. When I say nobody, no, no residential developments. Then in 2007, Churchill Downs really was the first to touch their, their common edge, early stages of development. And so at that point in time, we had the Coleman's and the Welsh's were there and they were open arms to the Churchill Downs residents. Fast forward to 2019 and you can see that obviously everything's built out in Trophy Club and there's very few, as we just heard. There's been, probably been a while since we've had a zoning case in Trophy Club. And so we are hoping to have a privilege to do a beautiful little project here. There's not much left, but the Coleman's and the Welsh's experienced firsthand the welcoming of new neighbors and on all sides, except for the core of engineer property. This is a, a little exhibit here showing the, our layout and it doesn't show the lots like I would like to of on the Highlands and Abbey Moore and Churchill Downs. I do have some hard copies if you'd like. But essentially what this shows and on my original exhibit is that the information's the same. But Abbey Moore has lot sizes that are 750 square feet smaller than our minimum lot size on the west. And they have about eight or nine adjacent homeowners on that side who we've met with several times. They have an 1,800 square foot minimum. The Highlands to the north across from the four-lane divided Trophy Park Drive has a 70-foot minimum lot width and an 8, 400 square foot lot size and an 1,800 square foot house size. On the east, we have two homes that abut our property. And to answer your question, Councilman Schaffner, there is an existing six-foot tall masonry wall that they maintain that was built with Churchill Downs that will remain their responsibility. We're not touching it. Then there's 25 feet of space that will be retained by my current property owner that they'll be responsible for maintaining. In this development, we've provided a second point of access through our open space lot, so that there's two points of access just in case it's needed. But the existing access will remain in place all the way to Trophy Park Drive. The, but we have two homeowners in Churchill Downs that side us and I have some pictures. They, they have, again, in addition to the 25-foot buffer, we'll have an additional solid wood fence, six-foot, that our homeowner association will have to maintain. In addition, so two fences on the, on the east side. The only point of my comment here is that they were here this whole time and they are, they were, as to my understanding, they've been good members, outstanding members of the community for, for one of them over half a century. And they want to sell their property. And we understand this is not an easy case, never is, but infill sites are typical, but I wanted to show you a few considerations with this application.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes, sir.
Just before you move forward. We got this last night and I, I was expecting more something what P and Z saw, but I was curious about what, what is, what's the intention of putting the phrase, "It's their time and turn"? I don't, I don't quite understand that.
I'm speaking from them personally. It's, they, they're ready to sell. They want us, they've owned the land since the 60s. And if you've met with the families I have, they want to sell. And they can't, they don't have the authority to just sell. And they can, but they need your approval. They need, they need a council vote to be able to realize and monetize their life savings in this property that they've accumulated. This is, whether or not we're approved tonight, one way or the other, I mean, I will recover. Obviously, we put a lot of time in it, but we'll recover. I mean, most people else, else here will walk out and not think, give it another thought after tonight. But my property owners, this is their life's blood. This is gonna be affect their children, their grandchildren and their, and it's their, their life savings. And so that's where I'm coming from, if that makes sense. I'm speaking from their heart on their behalf. And I hope that we have done a good job to put forth the utmost quality of standards for this development, leaving no stone unturned. And again, we've done, all we can do is the best we can do, but I hope that we can have some guidance and hopefully support favorably tonight. We stepped up our game from P and Z. We, we increased the minimum lot size of 2,200 square feet from 18. So we're already 400 square feet minimum higher than two-thirds of our adjoining subdivisions. And I put an additional restriction that at least 60% have to be 2,400 or bigger, which puts us actually for those homes right smack in the middle between the minimum for Churchill Downs and the Highlands and Abbey Moore, which is, so splitting the difference between 1,800 and 3,000 is 2,400. And we're gonna have 60% or more at 2,400. So it's gonna be more of a 2,400 community than it is even a 2,200 community. And we're happy to do that. And so that's what we're doing. We're putting our best foot forward. The zoning request real quick is, again, 42 lots. You can see on this aerial better the lots and homes against, with Abbey Moore and the two homes against us with Churchill Downs and the Highlands across the street to the north, all very beautiful communities. Our minimum house, lot size would be 6,000 square feet, which is 750 square feet larger than Abbey Moore. Our, our Windsor Homes quality and price point projects us in the, well into the fives. And we have an extensive list of architectural features attached to the PD. I'm not gonna bore you with all the details for the interest, in the interest of time. The zoning obviously is about highest and best use and there's a lot of factors that come into play with that. I know that's, and, and that can be in the eye of the beholder, but we do believe that this is a highest and best use proposal, creating a high-quality jewel box patio home community. The higher square footage than two-thirds of the adjoining subdivision.
A question for you on the patio home?
Yes, sir.
Define a patio home?
Well, I'm just using it for a 50-foot lot or anything smaller.
Usually patio homes attached, right? Connected to the building next to it.
If that's a code term of talent Trophy Club, then that's not what my intent is. I'm detached is what we're proposing tonight. Detached, single-family with a 50-foot wide minimum lot and a 40-foot wide pad. Sorry for any confusion. The price per square foot with our homes is gonna be between 170 and 220 a foot. And I know that's gonna pull people up. That's not, that's not a, I know there's concerns about, there are always concerns and rightfully so about property value, but our quality, and if you look us up Windsor Homes, we have a terrific reputation for building high-quality homes. The density, I understand. I've, I've heard the feedback and, but we have some significant challenges on this property is, was built around. And it's never gonna change for my property owners. It's never gonna change for the town. It just is what it is. It's not a matter of fault. It just is. And we've got about a half a million dollars of costs on a nine-acre site here that's not gonna change. Well, I guess I should say $426,000 if it's not gonna change. The shaded area, the southern half, requires 24,000 yards of dirt import, which will cost roughly $200, $280,000. We're gonna have an additional associated retaining walls to build that side up so that we can get our, our lots into the sewer. And again, you have to do this for any lot layout for this property. The southern half is just, it doesn't sewer to the cul-de-sac in Churchill Downs. So we got over $50,000 an acre of just get the site ready costs, let alone all the regular development costs. And so we need the density. That's why we're asking for it. The other thing is we have, we are voluntarily committing to bury this overhead line. You can see in the photo, the bottom corner, along Abbey Moore. Happy to make this commitment to them. It costs about a hundred dollars a foot and $71,000 to get this thing buried for them. And it'll enhance their backyards as well. And so we're, we're happy to make that as part of our, of a, of a commitment.
Are you doing the, are you burying the lines on Trophy Park Drive?
We don't know yet, is, is the answer. We want to, but here's the thing. If it's in the city right of way, then I don't, then it's an uncertain answer. If it's on our private property, 100% yes.
Do we know?
I don't 100% have that confirmed yet.
Do we don't know that answer yet?
So that, we're trying, we're, we're, we're asking on for to verify. The, uh... Summary of the points of the, of the enhancements since Planning and Zoning Commission and the resident feedback in the meetings, multiple meetings that I've had, this is the list. And as David said, you know, we're, we're having a 60% or more has to be at least 2,400 square feet with a 2,200 minimum, previously 1,800. The roof pitch, higher, more expensive construction went up to 10 to 12. We have a 90% minimum masonry. And then on the perimeter, we're gonna do single-family, or single-story homes along Abbey Moore. We're gonna have an eight-foot board-on-board fence along their property. Their fence is terrible and shambles right now. We'll build that as well and then we'll bury that power line along Abbey Moore internally. Last couple of slides, representative product. I've got a couple of slides here. And again, the last thing I was just wanting to just to say is just that we 100% respect that just because somebody's owned some property for, you know, decades, has no bearing whatsoever on any different treatment or any different entitlement or right from anybody else. But I just wanted to reiterate that they've been here a long time. I think they've been good people as far as my understanding has been and they've been great to work with for me. And I hope that the council will help us afford their families what they would like for the property. And it's simple as that, because I can't double, it's not a linear relationship to double, charge twice as much for a lot that's twice as big as a, as a 50. In other words, a 100-foot wide lot does not just get twice as much. It doesn't work that way, but the costs will never change. So I just wanna have a mercantile enterprise. I have to. It's not financeable otherwise. The only place I can retreat to is the land. And then that affects their family. So as I said, I'll recover one way or the other. Most people won't give it another thought after this night, but they will have to live with whatever we decide tonight. And I hope you'll look upon our request with favor tonight. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam?
Yes, sir.
We have a couple of people are gonna talk during our public hearing. And then we'll move from the public hearing to our Agenda Item B that will actually entertain dialogue about this. So we appreciate you staying for that. And so I'm gonna recognize Richard Ebel. Richard, are you here? Yes. Would you please come state your name and address and then you have the floor for a while.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Richard Ebel. Live at 2016 Churchill Downs Lane, so we're in the eastern segment of the discussion topics here this evening. We did have an opportunity to participate with a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting back on July 2nd via their Zoom meeting. And we've made these same points during that discussion. But I felt like it was appropriate to come and reinforce those comments with all of you so that you get a perspective as well. So I'm gonna talk about Churchill Downs because that's where we live. We moved here in 2011. We have watched the planning and development that has taken place with the, the new, new part of Trophy Club on the backside of town. And it's been very methodical. It's been laid out very well. We've moved from smaller footprints to larger footprints and we've had a nice transition between all of the properties as they got built on that side of town. And we're appreciative of that. I think the marketplace recognizes that and the properties are selling at a premium because of it. Within Churchill Downs, as was stated earlier, the minimum, minimum square footage of a yard is 10,000 square feet. I did a little research prior to coming. The property values in that subdivision are starting in the low 600s and going as high as 800,000 on the appraisal district rolls currently. While the original zoning for that subdivision may have said 3,000 square feet minimum, the homes in Churchill Downs are much larger than that. They're all greater than 4,000 square feet with, with the exception of four or five properties that are 3,800 to 4,000 square feet. And they run all the way up to 5,500 square feet. So there's a substantial difference between the proposed subdivision and what we have in Churchill Downs today. The property owners within Churchill Downs, I think, had an expectation when we moved in, knowing that those two parcels were zoned with the current provisions. The property owners that live there today have the opportunity to sell the property. They can be developed into footprints that are more likely match what are within Churchill Downs currently. So we, as homeowners in Churchill Downs, recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation be approved by the council and the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next person is Dean Murray. Dean, you're welcome to remove your mask as you address. State your name and address, please, when you get there.
Dean Murray, 2,000 Churchill Downs Lane. My particular property actually butts the wall that they referenced. My house is actually 6,200 square feet. It's actually bigger than the lots you're talking about putting in. And it becomes a problem for me when I refinanced my home, even the first time. When we looked at the Highlands and Abbey Moore, the banks don't understand how this town's laid out. They look at mileage and what's next to you and what's selling next to you and what's near you. It was lucky for me that Navy Federal Credit Union was actually able to go across the golf course and pick up Hogan's Glen. They had no idea that that's a whole different animal over there. And when they saw my house compared to Hogan's Glen, I was able to get financed. But I was turned down by four other banks before I got to them because they looked at Abbey Moore and they looked at the Highlands. And there weren't houses actually selling in Churchill Downs and since they were all so new. So they were judging me. My concern isn't really the size of these homes. It's, it's the stated square footage pricing. It's easy to say these are all gonna be $200 per square foot and they're gonna be $1,800, $1,800 square foot homes. I don't know me is gonna spend $600,000 for an 1,800 square foot home. My neighbor has a 4,500 square foot home and it took her a year to sell her house for $600,000. And that's in Churchill Downs. So I think it's, it's not gonna be a thing that people are gonna spend that kind of money next to me. And that's just my take on real estate and I'm no realtor. But I think that the downside of this, I want him to sell that land and I want it to be developed. In my mind, there should be 18 homes put in there or 20 homes. And they should have lots that are very similar to the size of our lots. My lot's 28,000 square feet. I could put three homes on my lot, what they're talking about doing, or four homes, I guess, not three, four homes. So I just, I think it should be developed and I think it should be the right home in there, but I really think that council needs to really pay attention, planning and zoning, that the right kind of homes are going in and the fit and finish on these homes is what they're saying it's gonna be. Because they're all over the place, even in Churchill Downs. Some of the homes, his home is really nice, but there's a few homes that came in towards the end that don't have the same fit and finish even within Churchill Downs, that pulled down some of the values even our homes. And I think for now, it's all about selling your home. You have to build a home with an end in mind. You have to sell it someday. It needs to appreciate, become valuable and you need to get your money out. And I plan on selling my home and I just don't wanna take a loss on it because all my neighbors, and then my lot, they're talking about a six-foot wood wall. I promise you, I'll be able to see in everybody's backyard from my house, standing in my driveway, as I can see over my wall now into that field. At a minimum, I think there should be another stone wall put up and it needs to be eight feet to block off that subdivision, not just wood walls that are maintained by homeowners. I think the subdivision needs to put in a proper stone wall like the rest of the walls that are around separating subdivisions. That'd be my only state that I would say to do with this. So anyhow, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Dean. The next person is Justin Springfield. Justin, you wanna come forward, state your name and address? You may remove your mask.
Uh, Justin Springfield, 2010 Churchill Downs Lane, Trophy Club, Texas, number 48, your program, number one in your heart. Very good. Great to see everybody. It's been a while. I didn't realize Councilman Jurasy was injured. Hope you heal up quickly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here today. Thank you for having me. And I would echo the comments of the other folks that live in Churchill Downs. I don't really have any interest in how big the houses are, what the pitch of the roof is. It, I, doesn't really concern me.
It doesn't really concern me that, uh, I do live in a house that's about the size or just smaller than what these lots are that are being proposed. And the, the developer, you know, mentioned a couple of things in the presentation that, that are true, right? I mean, there's a, there's demand here for anything, anything they want to build, you know, anything you want to build here. I mean, if they, if they did estate lots and there's plenty of people that don't want to pay the Hogan's Glen HOA fees and would love to build a custom home on a, on a large lot, but, and I'm not really wanting to get into the economics and what it's going to take and how they need to build a certain number of homes in order to get the land owner the price that they need. That's, that's really none of our business. But what this is, is we do live in a town that is nearly completely built out, right? So because of that, we don't even need one more house, right? We don't need it. And if we don't need it, then what we should get is something that the community expects and the community wants, and it lives up to our standards and what we want to live around and what we want to have. And because of that, I would hope that you guys would, well, like you always have, you know, you take everybody's comments into consideration and make decisions that are in the best interest for the community. And I know you'll do that here. But I would echo everyone else's comments. Forty-two lots is just way too big to put in there. Um, I'd love to see, I'd love to see it developed and if it's developed correctly, I might be a customer. Who knows? But, uh, not, not for a 42 lot development on 10 acres is way too much. We've got enough high volume, we don't need anymore.
Thank you, sir. Let me, have we had anybody else wish to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Counsel, the procedure that I'm going to work under, uh, is trying to give us the most flexibility in the remainder of our discussion and decision process. And so at this point, as opposed to closing the public hearing, I'm going to suspend the public hearing. We will move on to item 2B, ask our questions, deal with that, those type of things. And before we take any action on 2B, we will close the public hearing unless there was some reason to leave it open. Does that make sense? I know that maybe sounds confusing, but there's some reasons for that. So, uh, the public hearing for case PD 20-01 is suspended, uh, at, uh, 8:34 PM. And we will move on to item 2B, take appropriate action regarding and request to rezone approximately 8.88 acres from R15 single family residential district to a PD planned development district to construct 42 detached, single family residential lots located at 2304 and 2344, Trophy Park Drive. So I have a series of questions that I'd like to ask, uh, that might be helpful for all of us, uh, as we get into this. And if, uh, counsel, if you want to ask some questions, put your name in the queue and I'll get to you, uh, as I do down this. So, um, one of the items is a procedural thing for Trophy Club. This development is being, is come to with a zoning request to change the size of the lots, but to make it a planned development. In the past, PDs that we have had in Trophy Club have had a document that had significant more detail than what went to P and Z and what came to us. Example of that is, we have no idea what the setback is from the curb to the first building line of these homes. And I have an interest in that area. I do that because there was a concern in Abbey Moore that came after the fact that there's not enough room to have two cars parked behind each other and not cross the sidewalk. Uh, so I think that was a mistake and I don't know what this is going to do. And if it's a PD, I then have a concern that anything will come back to us to be approved. So what would come back to us, when? If it's not in the PD, then I wouldn't approve the PD tonight unless I knew that answer, personally. So I don't know if, if David, you know that answer or if Adam knows that answer, but, but let's deal with that one question now if we could.
The front setback, and there is some language in the, the PD both about the, the front setback and, um, the garage setback. Um, so the minimum front setback to the house is 15 feet. Uh, the minimum setback to the front of the garage, which would determine the driveway depth is, is 20 feet. Um, so that depth, uh, if you had two pickup trucks parked behind each other would, would probably result in, in the bumper of the second one going over the sidewalk.
So in all of their designs, that garage is recessed from the front?
Yes.
In order to get an extra five feet or whatever that is?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, just stay there if you would, probably make it easier. And so, um, the Abbey Moore, uh, minimum lot size, which was, which was talked about in the presentation, do we have any idea, know what the real lot size was? Was it the minimum of those number of lots or do they vary substantially throughout Abbey Moore?
I, I don't know that I can, that I can speak to the average square footage, um, of the lots. There are a variety of, of lot sizes, um, many of which may be above the minimum. Uh, so all I was speaking to was the minimum lot sizes that are in the PD.
Okay. Question probably is for both us and the developer. One of his big expense items that he talks about is fill dirt. He's having to raise those back lots so many feet. And he justified that by saying he needs to connect to the sewer. So because I have some knowledge of having been on the mud and in the town for a number of years, you can raise the level of the sewage with a lift station. So has he considered putting a lift station and not doing all the fill and solve his problem with maybe much less money?
I'd have to defer to the applicant on that one.
All right, because the applicant know that answer.
And Mayor, I would just say that, that, that question would be answered later on when they get into engineering and design. This point is, is more considering the zoning before you.
But it's a PD zoning, Steve.
No, I understand that.
And that's a total different ballgame in my experience. And so what kind of document is going to be approved tonight? If we approve a PD, there's very little that comes back in my impression as to what happens. And that's the document that controls a lot of what you do. So if I don't have that documentation, I wouldn't approve it. That's just me personally. So I'm just
Okay.
letting you know where I am in that particular thing. Okay.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'd, I'd skipped over your, your previous question without realizing it, that if the zoning were approved, then the next step would be a, a plat process.
So, so I guess it goes back to one for legal. What's before us tonight says to consider a request to rezone approximately 8.88 acres from R15 single family residential district to a PD planned development district and construct 42 detached, single family homes. Well, I'm not quite sure totally what we're approving. I know that they're saying a zoning change, but it's zoning from R15 to a planned development. And a planned development may not be specific until they come back to plat is what I'm hearing.
Well, the planned development would have to have the regulations or refer to the R15 or base zoning regulations that would be applied when the plat is filed.
So approving this tonight says it's going to come back, assuming that we approved it, to be this planned development with the lot sizes and that kind of thing. It would come back to us to have to reapprove a plat?
It could come in and plat if as long as it met the zoning, then that's when we get into your least favorite words of ministerial duty.
No, that's my least favorite.
Well, I, I think I think it's been collected. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Question probably for the developer. This overhead power line that runs down one side of the property, uh, which property does that sit on now? The property to be developed or is it on, over the back of Abbey Moore Homes property?
Go ahead.
Yes, please come forward and you can, Adam, you can remove your mask and y'all social distance somewhat.
Yes, Mayor, the, the power line poles are right behind, it's on our property, right on the other side, on our side of the fence, their existing fence.
And so if you bury that, you would create a utility easement?
Yes, sir.
Is my assumption.
Ten foot utility easement in the front yards of our lots, on the, on the lots that back up. So it wouldn't be in our backyards, so our homeowners could enjoy the backyard utility easement free. We put it within the 10 foot standard utility easement in the front yard, run that line.
And?
The front yard or on the edge, the side, the edge of the property?
It would be in the front yard along the right of way of the, the street right of way.
Street right of way.
Of, of the homes that back up to them.
All right.
Can I ask a question on that, Nick?
Let me, one sec.
Okay.
I will let you ask a question in one second, but just, um, well, I forgot what it was now. Okay. Uh, so Sean had the floor first. Sean, you want to ask your question?
No, I don't. I want to make a motion to deny item 2B.
All right. Do I have a second?
But Mayor, for clarification, probably a motion to deny and close the public hearing?
Uh, yeah, we're just fixing to deal with that. Uh, I was going to say that, uh, the motion by itself is out of order unless it includes closing the public hearing first, uh, as part of that action, if that's what you're trying to accomplish, because we can't really take action without closing the public hearing.
Okay.
So if you want to restate that?
Make a motion to, uh, deny item 2B and close the public hearing. And I'll still second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second before us. Uh, and so that, the other questions probably, you'll have to see if you can ask them based on addressing the motion, which you probably can. So Phillip, you still want to ask some questions?
Uh, yeah. Cause it's gonna, it's gonna be based on denial or approval, so. Tommy, do we know, um, what our, um, development standards on bearing lines are? Do you, do you have that? Do you know that?
Can you repeat the question?
The develop, do we have any development standards on bear, bearing power lines that you know of?
None that I'm aware of. None that I'm aware of.
Just, just that we prefer it? I, I know that anything new would have to be buried, but.
Yeah, it's always preferred, the, uh, that would be up to the utility companies and their, their direction, but as far as our, our standards, there's nothing in there.
Okay. Have, have there been any preliminary discussions with the mud about annexation?
Yes, sir. There have been and the mayor, and is the, I'm sure a lot more expertise than me, so correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what they've told me, uh, to, in getting to your question about the lift station. Um, they require a $3,000 submittal fee and full engineering plans. That's what they've told us. Uh, and so we can't do that unless we have zoning. And so that's the catch 22 that I'm in. Um, so we can't, we don't have the ability to get that answer until I do full engineering. They won't accept it unless I have the zoning. Uh, but we would consider that, uh, if we got to the, got to that stage of, of development and that we would have to bring a plat back and have to conform with a PD.
And are you familiar with our ordinances on parkland dedication?
Um, we've, we've read it. Uh, I can't remember off the top of my head, uh, what the requirements is. Uh, so if you can educate me, I'll, I'll be certainly happy to.
So you know that there's going to be a parkland dedication?
Oh, a, a fee. A fee. Yeah, yes, yes.
In lieu of land.
Yes, yes, so, yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, um, my, my, on why I support Sean's motion, but I want you to understand where I'm coming from. First of all, I, I, as a council member, um, what, what happened in the past with property owners and what they desire is, is something I consider, but my biggest consideration is, uh, much more to, to, uh, the town as a whole, not
Of course.
one particular property owner.
And I hope I conveyed that to you.
Yeah, it kind of caught me last night. I guess maybe I read it wrong or, or something because I, I, I went into my research mode and, um, you know, that I, I looked up on Denton CAD and the one property owner has 256,699 square feet and pays, paid last year $506.06 to the town. And the other property owner has 130,549 square feet and last year paid $302.48. Now, I'm, I'm way, way, probably at the very bottom of elected officials on the, on the ladder. And I don't, I, I, I don't understand Texas ag exemption rules, you know, that, that, that those properties have ag exemptions baffles me. I don't know if they raise guinea pigs or, or what they do. But, uh, I, I took a sample home in Churchill Downs that is 10,852 square feet and the, the guy's paying $3,029 to the town. And I took a sample home in Abbey Moore, 5,461, they're paying 1,900, so much, much more in just fees to the town, just property tax to the town. Not only that, but Nick, you and I were on a very contentious, uh, back and forth for the, uh, control of the fire station with the mud. Contentious in the fact that, I don't know, maybe contentious is the wrong word, but this property in particular was discussed. And if you remember, because they're not in the mud and because they're not in the PID, they do, they pay zero, zero fire tax. And so the, there were a few mud members who at the time said, well, we're not going to send a fire truck. And we said, okay, we will pay their portion of the fire tax so that you will put that fire out. So anyway, all that to say, you know, while I understand they want to sell the property, uh, as a council member, I support this motion because my biggest concern is density. And so two years ago, we did a, um, traffic study because we realized that there are particular arteries in town and the closest one to this, uh, section of town is Trophy Club Drive and Bobcat. And they gave us three options. One option was do nothing, which ultimately we decided because of, uh, cost and other factors. Uh, another option was, uh, I think stop signs at the location. Uh, another option that they recommended were stoplights. The stoplights would have cost the town 200, I think at that time, $277,000. Um, and they didn't even contemplate this 42 houses, 44 houses that, that you're going to put there. And so that was not even considered in the, in the traffic study. And so, so for me, and when I look at Trophy Club, uh, and I, and I, I went back and I read Abbey Moore, when it went from townhomes, because I know the history, just, you know, I know you wanted to do a, a much bigger presentation tonight. When they went from townhomes to, uh, the 5,000 square foot lots, uh, if you go back and read the P and Z minutes of that time, uh, Merdod got before the P and Z and he made the statement that these, this is a niche, uh, desire that people have to have these low, uh, lot lines. And these are people that will be empty nesters, they won't have kids, they won't, the first person I met in Abbey Moore was Sean Bone with three kids. And so, so what Merdod predicted back then, none of it came true, you know? And so, so perhaps we filled that niche of a small, you know, area that people wanted, it And so, so perhaps we filled that niche of a small, you know, area that people wanted, it definitely didn't turn out for the predictions that he made. But, uh, if you look at the pit as a whole, the average lot size, uh, square footage is just about nine thousand square feet. Churchill Downs, ten thousand square feet. If you look at the rest of Trophy Club, uh, it would be much higher than that. And so, those are, those are my concerns, uh, and why I support the motion, is just because density, uh, plays a major role as far as traffic and things of that nature. Uh, uh, another thing that concerns me is two entrances into this community. If you look at, I, I don't like that the fact that it's gonna interfere, interfere with bow moral, I think that that leads into neighborhood nine, I think, you have one entrance. Uh, you have one entrance on, what's your entrance, Waverly? What's the entrance that goes into your house?
Anndale.
Eddie, what is it?
Anndale.
Anndale, that goes into neighborhood, what are you, five, four, six, I don't know. And, and so you have, you have one entrance, so, so we've made a conscious effort in those areas to keep that traffic pattern at a minimal. You look at Churchill Downs, one entrance, so those two entrances, I, I, I don't necessarily like. And so, so anyway, it, it boils down to me, um, and I, I had a lot more that we could have gotten into as far as design standards and things like that, but maybe that's for another day. But I do support the motion, uh, only because, again, density is gonna be a huge factor in my decision. I like R fifteen, I know that that's perhaps unattainable to, you know, but, uh, but certainly, this size lot is, creates a huge density problem in that area, which I think is, uh, uh, probably overcrowded at this point, based on even traffic studies that we've done in the past.
Alright, thank you Phillip. Michael?
I guess, uh, since, uh, I support the motion to, to proceed with the denial and, and Bone and, and Monger, and so I have a couple of things here, I'm gonna drop some of that stuff off, so I guess I'm gonna say why I'm supporting, uh, proceeding on with, with the motion. I still have lots of questions on, on this development, how this is gonna lay out, and if we have questions, I'm sure residents do, and I don't support with moving forward with, uh, with the, the approval at this time, especially for these lot sizes. I also agree that, uh, I don't see any reason at this time to reduce the zoning down to below R fifteen. I'm also concerned with the traffic study, as people who live in the Highlands like I do, this development is not just gonna affect Abbey Moore, which we talked about a lot, Churchill Downs, but also the traffic to the four schools going through the Highlands toward, to the four schools, and that doesn't even mention the daycare schools. So there's a massive traffic, uh, and I questioned the study about the flow rates, because anybody who lives there in the Highlands know people do not take Trophy Club Drive to get to those schools or to the daycare areas. I'm also, uh, said in the planning and zoning meeting, it was said again tonight, that Trophy Club's built out, and people are asking for larger lots, they're not asking for smaller lots, they're looking for bigger things. And just being here, being a resident, living in this town, uh, and being conscious of the, of the neighborhoods that are around there, which is Churchill Downs, the Highlands, and across the, uh, the greenbelt areas there, I, I would also agree that we move forward with denial of this, uh, this permit.
Alright, Carl?
So I always wait to go last, because everybody said just about everything else. Uh, I want to say I, I seconded the motion, because I don't see a compelling advantage to the town to change the current zoning. And the planning and zoning commission recommended denial. So it's pretty much as simple as that to me, uh, when you mess with where somebody lives, we got a lot of great residents that gave us, uh, feedback, both pro and con, when you mess with where somebody lives, it can get very emotional. And so I'm trying to separate the emotion from that, and I just don't see a compelling reason or advantage to the town to change the zoning, as simple as that.
Alright, thank you. So the motion before us is to close the public hearing and to, uh, deny the zoning request and plan development district. So as, uh, just to make sure, uh, David, we do this correctly, uh, the motion is to deny and doesn't mention anything about P and Z. So is that still everything okay? We're not saying how we're dealing with their recommendation?
You're not sending it back or anything else, you're making the council's ruling on the case and the proceeding, it goes to P and Z and now it's council's, but.
Okay, everybody understand that. So if you support this motion, then there won't be any more P and Z thing, there won't be any more council consideration, uh, the applicant could resubmit something if they chose to do so and start over. Everybody clear? Anybody else want to speak on the motion? Alright, seeing no one seeking the chair or requesting to speak, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing and deny the approval of item two B, please show your hands. It is unanimous. It is dealt with. Alright, thank you, everybody, I'm just gonna make a quick little announcement, just to let everybody know, is Onomias Tex-Mex, which I meant to do at the beginning, is open for business tonight.
And drinks are on deck.
Till, till nine thirty. And they'll be open in the evenings for about two weeks before they open for lunch. And so you have about three minutes to finish the rest of this, if we're gonna get a margarita, no, I'm just, I guess that's not gonna happen. Alright. We are on the consent agenda, items three through six, does anybody wish to remove any of those items from council?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items three through six.
Second. It's my turn.
Well, I'm mixed. It is a motion, isn't it? Okay.
It's kind of quick, but.
Yeah, it was kind of quick. I have questions about six, I just don't have enough data there to support it, so, but.
We can pull it if you want.
We can pull it, I mean.
Well, you already have a motion that doesn't, so.
We can withdraw it.
We can withdraw it.
All withdraw the motion.
Yeah, to agree.
Agreed.
Hate to do that, but, so I would like to pull item six, just so we can deal and ask some questions with it, so I, I would entertain a motion three through five or something like that. Sean, you move?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items three through five and pull item six.
Second.
Alright. All in favor, show your hands? Alright, it is done. Uh, I just wanted to, I didn't have enough data about six, and it dealt with budgetary issues, so, and I failed to send an email earlier to find out about it. So, the thirty thousand dollars that we are proposing to spend for this watch guard, which I'm not opposed to the watch guard, it's just the money issue. Where is it coming from? And in that endeavor, if the answer is general fund or police budget kind of thing, why wouldn't that come from CCPD? So that's my question.
So Mr. Mayor, I can, I can answer that question for you. Mike Pastor's actually done a great job of looking through our current IT budget, and we have saved about ninety-five, ninety-six percent of, um, the money and other expenditures that we were able to, um, either forego, or that this would replace those expenditures on. So, uh, we have a very little value add to the budget, um, due to this expenditure. The, the remaining little piece, uh, would be a general fund.
I thought you said he came up with ninety thousand.
I don't know, ninety-five percent, ninety to ninety-five percent.
I heard that wrong.
Sorry.
Okay.
The majority of the thirty thousand has been covered by cuts in the budget elsewhere, that are, um.
From IT?
From IT, yes, sir.
In, in the current budget?
Yes, sir. In the current budget, but they are reoccurring expenditures.
And this is a one-time expense?
No, sir, a, a portion of this is one time, but a portion of this is also reoccurring.
What, what's the amount of reoccurring or whatever?
I'll have to get Mike Pastor out here to talk about that.
Mike Pastor's here. You can take your mask off if we can hear you better.
I think it's twenty-three or twenty-four thousand a year.
Is recurring?
Uh, reoccurring, correct.
And so, what are we spending now reoccurring? Does anybody know? Because you've got some kind of system now.
It's, I think, seven for software, and I think.
We might need to.
I, 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 I don't know, I'd have to look it up.
But this is a, and, and the chief may be able to talk about this, but this is a huge operational issue, that we've had some very big challenges with, uh, our in-car cameras, and, uh, as far as videos, and, uh, you want to touch on that?
Basically, this is one of our critical systems, this records and protects all of our videos from our car kiddy's and our body cameras, and we did have an issue, um, and it revealed the flaw in our system, and this will fix that. So, we need to not only keep all of our videos for a certain amount of time, but we also need to extend keeping those videos out for actually several, several years. So all of our contacts with vehicle stops for traffic citations and warnings, we've been advised we need to keep for two years or more, for the statute of limitations to run out. So that increased our usage of our system, so this will, uh, afford us unlimited storage for, um, the foreseeable future. So, and it protects us and gives us, um, access to it real time, anywhere, anytime. So, it just, it's, it's basically what everybody else has already done, we've just been slow to migrate to the cloud. So this puts it in a cloud with redundant backups, um, and stuff like that, because when we did have an issue, we didn't have access to our system at all, so we couldn't see anything that we had.
So, I'm sorry, so if I'm following you correctly, uh, currently, or prior to today, we were keeping those videos on internal servers, and now we've removed those to the cloud.
We're gonna put everything in the cloud, yep.
I'm, I'm with you.
Alright, thank you very much. Everybody for questions, I would move the adoption of item six, do you have a second?
Second.
So, I had a question, so had we not, had you not found money in this year's budget, what would you have done?
We would, no, this was very critical, we would have found the money, we would have cut expenditures.
And so, is, is this coming to us because it passes a threshold, or because it would have came to us, uh, based on you finding the money to buy it? In other words, what, what brought this to us?
It was over twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so, so I've always had a problem with finding money and then buying something. I've, you know, I've, I've been, I mean, I support this, don't get me wrong, I just, I, had it been under that, you would have just done it, we would have not even known about it, you know what I'm saying? So, I've always had a problem as a council member to approve a budget with a, certain things that we're gonna buy, and then we come to the end of that budget, or we come to a part of the year, and all of a sudden, oh, well, we found money, so we're gonna buy this. I, I just, it's a personal thing with me, you know, I'd much rather be upfront like this, what, you know, whatever, uh, obviously, there's a threshold, but, but certainly, ticket items that you need, I'd much rather them be budgeted, but if, if it's something like this, I'd much rather you come to us, that's just my personal preference.
No, I understand, I mean, this was unforeseen, uh, you, you know, and I have to have some discretion, you know?
Yeah.
To make some of these decisions, and, and as long as we don't exceed that budget, then.
And, and then one other question, does, will this make it faster to, to actually get, uh, body cam, uh, video, or easier?
Yeah, it, it will make it easier, I mean, the system will still upload the same way we're doing it right now, they'll put in their own server, so when the cars pull in the parking lot, or the guys dock their body cameras, it'll go right through a, a watch guard server, not one of our own, right into the cloud. And that makes it easier to download and stuff like that, because we're pulling it right now.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, any other discussion on this item? Hearing that, we'll call for vote, all in favor of item number six, please show your hands, it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, uh, take appropriate action regarding the interlocal agreement, commercial lease for real property, Annex and Parks Maintenance Building and the municipal utility district. Uh, so you have before you an ILA, a red line, uh, a red line of the lease, and a, uh, revised, uh, ILA that got changed at the mud meeting, is my understanding, with an addition.
Some minor changes, I believe.
Yeah. And so, uh, we have gone through several months of trying to iron this out, uh, ranging from starting at trying to exchange property or purchase property and sell property, which became more complicated, uh, with zoning and surveying and all sorts of aspect. And so, the results of that is basically a law, a ninety-nine year lease for the town to lease the maintenance barn, the mud maintenance barn, which the mud owns, and owns the land. And so it would really just be a lease of that building, that does have the ability for cancellation, if either party wanted out of it, we can get out of it. We've been using that building for parking wrecks predominantly, maybe some streets things, for many years. And so the mud really doesn't use it. The Annex Building, which is a, a addition to the main Savor Building that was built by the town, was financed by the town, still has a note at the bank for another six years or something.
December of twenty-four will expire.
Okay, so, not, not even that long. And so the plan is, because it really wasn't collateral for the note, uh, it really doesn't have anything to do with it, other than we've always carried it as a note on the Annex Building, but it was not pledged as collateral. So we would just continue to pay that, uh, we can pay it off early, but there's no savings for that, so it's kind of like, why do it? Uh, the mud has a desire to, uh, use that building. So, uh, Phillip, you asked for some information today, and I'm not sure if all the council saw the answer that we got from Wade. Does anybody, that was a financial aspect of that? Did y'all get a chance to see that? Okay, at least I thought, I looked at it and saw that it went back to mayor and council. Phillip, do you have it in front of you?
Uh, yeah.
Maybe you can.
So I, I had a few questions, first of all, if you notice in, if you notice in your packet, page sixty-nine, um, it, it made the statement, after several months of negotiation and meetings, the agreement is now ready to be considered by the town council. Uh, I, it should be noted that I did not agree with the final document, and, but you'll see that on page seventy, they actually note, uh, two items that were less than total agreement, and, and I'll elaborate on that later. So some of the questions that I had, um, is if, if you look at, um, I think that that's, uh, it had to do with, uh, and David may know better where this is at, but, uh, there's, there's a part of the lease that says that, um, that they would ask for a.
Of the lease or the agreement?
Of the agreement. Release of claim to Annex Building, that, that part, so it says, the town hereby releases any claim or interest of any kind, uh, or nature in and to the Annex Building, and the town acknowledges and agrees that the Annex Building is a permanent improvement to the district, uh, so, so it says, upon writ, upon receipt of written requests by the district, the town agrees to promptly execute any instrument requested by the district to evidence its release of any ownership or claim in and to the Annex Building. So I guess one of the questions that I had is, should we do that prior to paying off that debt? Should we agree to, to that prior to paying off any kind of debt?
Debt on the building?
Right.
It's not debt on the building, there's no documentation that shows it's secure by that.
But what are we paying for? We're paying for the building. That's, so that's why I'm, I just.
You're paying for a, a.
I would wait to dispute that until you.
That was given to us.
Okay. Uh, and I don't disagree, but should we, should we have that in the document? Because it says, like, again, like a, you know?
To me, I mean, it.
And that was one of the questions.
Sounds like another queer as mud situation.
Yeah, I know, and I.
I would say is, upon receipt by the district and. Let me think, I put a catch-all in there saying.
So that, so that Nick, I only bring this up because this is something that obviously we don't, you don't have to do it tonight, but we should have that prior to the joint meeting, you know?
It's my understanding that I got this from staff previously. Don't know if it, I, I didn't go to the bank and see it. But my understanding was that somewhere there was some documentation that it was collateralized by the swimming pool.
Swimming pool revenues is what I.
Swimming pool revenues. Yeah.
If that's the case, then you don't have a problem.
So you're going to, you're going to pay off a loan because you have revenue from the swimming pool? And there's no mention about the annex building. So.
Well, I would just like to double check, you know, just, and I don't, I don't disagree with you. Just that particular item caught me when they said that upon receipt of a request by the district, you know? And prior to paying off, prior, prior to paying off that loan, I just want to make sure that before we execute this, you know, that we fully met that.
Good point.
Okay.
So if we, if we come up with any changes tonight or approve however, we still have our joint meeting to deal with this. So.
And so, so that just led me to think, okay, what are items that we can then not be responsible for? So I sent a email to the town manager and Wade and, and Nick, I think, and the finance director. Just asking about landscaping and insurance and things of those natures. And so there's, there's a pretty big number, I think, that Wade sent to us. We pay about 7,000, 7,800 in utilities, 8,000 in maintenance or, or ground maintenance, you know, for landscaping and things like that. Storage, supplies, insurance. So anyway, it comes up to about 20,000. And we, we, so that's 20,000 in the annex, 12,000 for the maintenance barn that we're doing. Once this agreement, once we approved this agreement, that 20,000 Wade, I'm assuming goes away. And then we are, would just be responsible for 5,400 at the maintenance barn. So that's, that's kind of the, the financial numbers that, that I was looking for.
You're saying that the 20,000?
20,000 is what we're paying now for just the annex building, just sitting there.
And then in our new number would be the five, the 5,405.
Right. Because we would get rid of the lease that we're paying. We're paying a lease or a rent each month, I assume.
Now that 20,000 does not include the note payment.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. We would still have that for however long.
You want to go to your other item?
What was the other?
Section 4.10.
Not yet. Uh, 4.4. No, not yet. I'll get to that. I did want to, I did want to look at this, David, section 4.09 before we get to that, to that district access corridor. It says the town shall fully cooperate with and shall grant all approvals sought by the district for construction of the roadway. Well, the first thing that stood out to me is the town agrees to fully cooperate with the district to facilitate the dedication of right of way. I, I would, I did, I don't really know what that means. I guess.
Means you'll sit down and maybe it doesn't mean you're guaranteeing that you're going to give them everything they want.
Okay. So then it says the town shall fully cooperate with and shall grant all approvals sought by the district for construction of the roadway. So is that saying we, we can't deny anything?
In the same paragraph?
Uh, yeah. Down about three, four sentences. Says the town shall fully cooperate with and shall grant all approvals sought by the district for construction of the roadway.
It looks like they're agreeing to approve it.
Regardless of.
Shall fully cooperate with and shall grant all.
It's got to be built to cities.
Okay. So, so what I would like to add to that is if you, if you go back to 403, design of junctionway extension and look at the last sentence. It says the road improvement shall be prepared in accordance with all applicable local, state and federal regulatory requirements for a public road. I just want to add that sentence to 409. So that it's in, in the document that they know that that's the requirement.
Are you taking something from one agreement and put in the?
No, no, no.
No, same agreement.
Same agreement. You're just repeating it?
See, they're, they're requiring us to, to design junctionway extension to meet all the improvements in accordance with all applicable. So I just want to do the same thing for their corridor. Nothing major, just, just adding a sentence there.
Are you clear on what needs to be added?
But I can send all this.
How about at the end of that sentence you were talking about, so that says we shall cooperate, grant all.
Yeah. Just add that.
How about if we just say at the end of that sentence, as long as the road improvement shall be prepared in accordance with all?
That's fine. Yeah. I, I have no problem with that. So the big one for me is 4.10 tree mitigation. When we first started, this is for, for council. When Nick and I first started this, one of the ask for the mud was to waive all tree mitigation and tree removal. And I have no problem with that. The problem that I have is the last sentence. The provision of this section 4.10 shall continue for so long as the district retains ownership of the wastewater facility tract and shall survive expiration or termination of this agreement. So in other words, they are wanting the tree mitigation. It, so in other words, if they did away with this agreement in a year, they want that tree mitigation to survive, you know? So, so, and I have no problem with not requiring tree mitigation of the mud. Cause it's, it's basically one pocket and another pocket. So what I want to do is just clear this section up. And I sent to, to Letty and to David, just a, a new section or a rewording. So what I want to say is basically the same thing the town releases the district and its contractors, agents and representatives of any and all tree mitigation requirements and tree removal restrictions otherwise applicable to the wastewater facility tract, including tree replacement and payment obligations of any kind. So what I want to do is add for so long as the mud retains ownership of any land subject to tree mitigation requirements and tree removal restrictions. So I want to basically say that as long as they are the owners, then we're fine with that tree mitigation. I want to just clear that up. And then the, the last thing that I want to put is further, this release shall survive for so long as both the agreement and maintenance building lease remain legal, valid and binding by all parties. So those are the, that's just the section that I want. It has nothing to do with zoning, which initially I, I wanted to, the zoning of that, not the mud where the, the mud building is, where the, where the wastewater treatment, but the land that they bought. That zoning is actually our 12 is a sliver around it. And then commercial recreation makes no sense. And so originally I approached the mud and I thought that, okay, we'll grant tree mitigation, but we want to change the zoning to GU, which is government use, which is what their wastewater facility has now. And the reason that I wanted to do that is because I think that a future council, if the mud sells this land, which if you go back in the history, they've made a statement that if they don't need it, they could sell it. The prior board, not this board. So there, there is that possibility that they could sell it. When you add this 30-foot easement that we're giving them for a road, they could actually, you know, sell that piece connecting to that property, which I have no problem with. But I thought that a future council should have the zoning, you know, requirements or should, should have a say in the zoning requirements. You'll notice one of the small changes that they made, that they sent back to us is 4.13 zoning matters. In the event the town changes the zoning of the wastewater facility tract without the consent of the district, which we, Nick confirmed that we could do that, then the agreement and the maintenance building lease shall terminate for all purposes. So they added that, that after the fact, without us knowing and everything. So, so I have no problem if the mud wants to build a maintenance barn, if they want to, whatever they want to build back there, as long as they own it and they have it, we shouldn't charge them tree mitigation. But the moment they sell it, I think it should be noted that it should be, you know, the tree mitigation goes back into place. Or if the termination of this agreement, because one of the reasons that they're doing this in lieu of getting rent is for the tree mitigation. So that was their whole reason for wanting the tree mitigation to kind of offset costs and things like that. I will make this final statement. PD 30, which if you look at, I wish I had the map of PD 30 before they started building. And you look at the mud property that they own, which is wall-to-wall trees. Property line, property line, it's full of trees. PD 30 didn't have near that. Our tree mitigation on PD 30 was 412,950. Now they replaced things. They did things to mitigate that tree mitigation, but they had to add all those trees in. So that's why I, for me, I think it's important to, to just nail it down that as long as they have it, we're okay with tree mitigation, as long as this agreement is in effect. And this agreement is a 99-year lease, the tree mitigation stands. So that's just the changes that, that I'd like to make.
So I could be clear?
Yeah.
If we just take that last sentence in 4.10, the provisions of this section 4.10 shall continue for as long as the district retains ownership of the wastewater facility tract and shall not survive?
Yeah. So, so.
Not survive expiration or termination.
Yeah. For so long as the mud retains ownership of any land subject to tree mitigation requirements and tree removal restrictions. Further, the release shall survive for so long as both the agreement and maintenance building lease remain legal, valid and binding by all parties. And if the wording, if you want to change the legal ease of that, then by all means.
You, you sent me that. I'll look at it.
Yeah.
I'll get something out.
So that's all I think I have, Nick.
All right. So Sean, you want to speak?
Did you ever ask anyone on the mud about section 4.13? The zoning matters?
No, no, we discussed this.
I did.
Oh, you did.
You did.
Did you get an answer?
Yes.
What'd they say?
It is the results of me making a comment to them that said the town has authority to rezone the land, whether you want it rezoned or not, which we do, we don't typically do. Typically someone asks for rezoning. So they're, they took that as, oh, well, if we don't ask to rezone it to be government use, the town could say, I want to rezone it to government use. As opposed to it being zoned commercial recreation. The, the reason I think it's commercial recrea- recreation is because some members of the board felt like you could do some type of park thing there if they didn't need it. So when the decision was made to install the new wastewater treatment plant with the new technology, the odds of them needing that land for the old technology went away or decreased substantially. So it's like, well, I have land. What can I do with it? Well, it currently acts, acts as a buffer from a wastewater treatment plant. And it's heavily treed and it goes downhill very rapidly. It's going to be hard to do much with it at all. But when I was trying to make a point that said, well, why do you object to it being government use? Cause you could come back later and ask to be it rezoned. And that just became more of an argument with the member of the committee. And so I made a statement that I probably shouldn't have made. It said, well, the town could rezone it if they want to. So that ended up coming back into something they wanted to protect. In my, they didn't tell me that's the reason they added it, but.
And, and just to be clear, the zoning at CR in that area, because originally Beck wanted to go north for the golf course maintenance. The golf course maintenance originally was in Hogan's. And so he wanted to build houses. So he wanted to move, I, I, I think, what I gather from the minutes. And so he wanted to go north of the wastewater treatment plant, zoned it and everything, and then changed his, changed his mind, I guess, Nick? Maybe, I don't know. And then put it east. I, I say east. I don't know. I'm just looking at this as north, southeast, but where it's at currently. But anyway, I agree with Nick that, you know, I just think that I, I originally thought it should be government use. And so I wanted to try, tie me, tree mitigation into requiring them to rezone it. But, but in looking back now, I'm fine with just clarifying the tree mitigation. That as long as you own it, we'll give you tree mitigation. And as long as this agreement is in effect, which, which you wanted the tree mitigation in lieu of cash and things like that, then I'm good with it. Whether they agree, I don't know.
Any other questions? So we have our joint meeting in two days. So tomorrow we need to get those changes to them. Okay. Anybody else?
Do we need to make a motion to agree?
I'm sorry, real quick, you just for clarification, just talking about this area right here or this area right here?
Yeah, that area.
Right. It's here, right here.
Right. All of that.
All of that. Yeah.
Yeah. You can either approve it tonight with those changes or wait to see him and approve it at the joint meeting.
I think we wait.
No reason to do anything tonight.
Can we, we probably should send that to, it's going to be, the only problem with Zoom, it's very difficult to communicate.
That's the reason I said it needs to get changed tomorrow.
Get changed first thing in the morning.
So we can get out to them and it adds to the meeting.
I'll get it changed first thing in the morning and get it to y'all to make sure it's what you want to send to them.
So I, I haven't looked at the joint agenda close enough. Does it have us taking separate action? I don't remember what it says.
I thought there was two actions there.
I'm hoping it's two actions. Town takes action and they take action.
Well, they'll have their agenda and we'll have our.
Yes. Okay. I think so. Okay. All right. So as long as y'all are clear on what the changes are. And Phillip, if you work with them to try to make that happen so we can get it to them.
Hey Nick, just for clarification, we got, if I'm understanding you correctly, we have item number one, which take appropriate action as far as the fire protection services of financials. And then for 2021, and then take appropriate action regarding the interlocal agreement. Am I, am I correct? The real property? So.
But it's.
But that's, that's all under one item. I thought it was two, but I guess I was confusing.
But it's their agenda or our agenda?
This is our agenda.
Oh, okay. That's fine then. We have our own agenda to take action on. Right. Okay. All right. Anything else? Steve, any recommendations?
Nope.
All right. Uh, let's move on to item eight. Conduct a public hearing regarding the crime control and prevention districts budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And it is 9:29. We will open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the public hearing? Seeing no one wishing to do so, it's still 9:29 and we will close the public hearing. All right. We are then on the second part of item eight. Take appropriate action regarding the crime, crime control and prevention district budget for 2020, 2021. And so. Was it, okay, Patrick, you going to say something?
Yes. I, I really don't have anything other than the CCPD board reviewed the budget and, and approved it and moved it forward. So, I mean, any question, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I, I had some questions about it that I sent to Mike and to Steve where I wanted more detail. And so I never got that in, in the form that I recognized. And it really dealt with an item that, that just says capital outlay. Uh, what is that? Cars, radios?
Is that the 150,000?
150,000. Cause it's not so much. It's kind of like, well, what is it?
Yeah, that's three cars. We're going to replace two patrol vehicles or two police cars. And we're going to replace the ACO truck this year. The, in.
Okay.
The, all of the. Mr. Irwin is going to remove all of the debt service for next year. So CCPD has full access to the full revenue of the account. And so that's why we chose to. And so that's why we chose to, since we had that extra fifty thousand, to go ahead and replace the ACO vehicle this year.
So when uh, so are you telling me that the forty seven thousand that or roughly that that was happening each year was a debt service number?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so um John Zurgsky, two years ago, uh removed the debt service at seventy five percent, so he left fifty thousand in there. And for and for next year, Mr. Irwin's gonna remove even that and take the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt service for next year, and then the following year, we're gonna put it all back.
Gotcha. Thank you very much for that.
So why why remove it? Why, wh- where is that money coming from then? The the money that you're taking out?
Okay, um. The city's, and this is my first budget here, but the city's plan is to keep the INS rate at about eleven cents. We've had some debt falloff. We're bringing a refunding to y'all next week. But we had a margin to where we could move the the structured payments about a hundred and fifty thousand, and the actual payments had been about fifty thousand. But we had some margin in our INS to where we could just make the whole pain, we could cover that fifty thousand with property tax and leave the equipment money available for CCPD to to purchase equipment with.
It's not going to affect the tax rate?
No, sir, it's not gonna affect your tax rate, your INS tax rate.
So but if we left the money in there, then you're saying it would affect affect the tax rate? If we had, if we had CCPD continue to make that payment?
If this year, with the idea of staying at the eleven cents, if CCPD had contributed that fifty thousand, then we would have just added more into the first year payment of our refunding.
Do we have any other funds that are making contributions?
Yes, sir, yes.
What funds are those?
Uh, the drainage fund makes contribution, and I'm trying to think of the other one real quick. Um.
The reason I'm, the reason I've said that, the reason I'm saying this is because um I don't know why we look at CCPD first to cut and not the other funds. And and the reason I say that is because when CCPD was formed, one of the selling points, one of the presentation points to the citizen was that they would, that CCPD would uh take on that debt load for constructing a new building.
Okay.
And so we made a conscious effort, I don't know, Nick, several years ago, to to put a lot of that burden on C on CCPD uh for debt service. And so I I'm not so sure that CCPD is where we want to relieve that debt service, and maybe we want to go, especially with drainage problems that we're having, maybe we want to look at those other funds.
But but let me just say this, though, on the CCPD, this is a one year.
Right.
Issue that we're doing, and this frees us up to be able to buy three vehicles for police that desperately need it. So the following year, everything goes back, but we just had an opportunity in this one year. We're not cutting CCPD, we're not taking money away at all. We're just easing up the debt payment because we have an opportunity, and we're taking those monies that we're saving and putting it into buying vehicles. And which would free up general fund.
So you're you're projecting in twenty twenty two that your starting balance is sixty five grand?
Yes, sir.
You're still gonna make, you're gonna put the debt payment back in there and still end up with sixty six, sixty seven grand?
Because expenditures that had been picked up in CCPD will be moved back to the general fund at that for next year, for the twenty two year. And as far as the drainage, um drainage is making no contribution to the INS either this year. So all that money is staying in the drainage fund and can be put to projects in the drainage fund.
So have we thought about doing a a short term tax note to keep INS where it's at, to put on capital projects?
We'll be bringing that to you as part of the budget. We've got some ideas that that we're looking at, so.
Similar similar, Nick, to what we did in two thousand and fourteen, I think?
Just so everybody understands what Philip was saying is, there was a conscious decision when we were building this building to where did we borrow money to pay for this building? And because the police department took a large portion of this building, it it was justifiable to say, well, the amount of money going to crime control prevention district could be used to help pay that debt, which meant we didn't have to go to the citizens to do that kind of thing. So that's what Philip is kind of talking about, is the reason that was there, and if we're not doing it, then what happens? So that's.
And again, and we're not deviating from that plan.
You're just, you're creating a short term fix for a need that you have.
Well, that answered my questions. I just. It 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 was interesting, because I asked this, that no, at least what I understand is that nobody on CCPD asked questions about that, so I don't know whether that was the case or not, but.
So let me ask you this. So how do we rectify that? That that's a a short term problem that we have now. What what about five years from now, six years from now? Is this where the capital improvement program would then kick in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes sense.
All right. So we are to the item of consideration for this. I would entertain a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve that.
Second?
Yeah.
All right, Monger move and Bone second it.
You closed the public hearing.
It was closed, both of them. It was open and closed.
Already did it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the same minute.
In the same minute, because the clock didn't change. And if I said, if I said nine thirty, then somebody would have said, no, it's not. I should have said the number of seconds.
Yeah, so somebody would have.
Yeah, I know. They'll still probably say it says nine twenty nine. How did you open and close it in the same minute? Well, it's got a second count on it. All right, all in favor of approving the budget, show your hands. It is unanimous, it does pass. Thank you very much. Uh, all right. Help me, counsel. I think that we are finished with our regular agenda and are ready for executive session.
Yep.
Is that right?
Looks like it.
All right, so it is nine thirty eight, and we will convene into executive session and be back in a little bit. And take a. Counsel will come to order. It is ten oh three P M. Item number eleven, take appropriate action regarding a resolution of the town council, appointing one applicant to the parking wrecks board. For everyone's information, um we have an expired term for about two months that we're making an appointment. That same position on the board uh could be appointed tonight for the two year term that's coming up at the end of September. And we have three more positions that would be up for renewal at the end of September, and so all of these applications that we had would remain open for us to consider, and we had lots of good applicants. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve Tom Bath for the remainder of the existing term and uh completion of the the following, a full term to Parks Board.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Garassi, a second by Bone. Any discussion? Are any none? All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. At this time, it is ten oh four. We are adjourned.